Tonight on UBSUDDer.live, Government Watch. Marysville Unified School Trustees, beginning around 6:30, they often start late. Then 7 o'clock tonight, the UBSUDDer Live's Government Watch. Presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage at plumaslakeselfstorage.com. Government Watch. That's happening tonight, right here on UBSUDDer.live.
UBSUDDer.live, it's the truth that comes through.
Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Pledge of Allegiance, Seth Steeman, Vice President, the Board.
Please stand for the pledge. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, just for all.
Thank you, please be seated.
Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, I have unfortunately some sad news to share. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to remember a member of our teaching staff, Mr. Steven Davis. Mr. Davis was a 6th grade long-term substitute teacher at Linda Elementary. He passed over the weekend. Prior to joining our district, it was essentially a second career for Mr. Davis. He came out of retirement, was affectionately known as Grandpa with our kids, was much loved, certainly appreciated and valued as a colleague and as a teacher. He'd make the comments to Principal Pat O'Brien, "I'll continue to help as long as you need me." A great individual. Again, life's short, it happens suddenly, and thank you to our staff, our counselors, our school psychologists, just everybody throughout our district community who were at Linda throughout the week, working with staff members and students as well. On behalf of the school board in the entire district, we extend our heartfelt condolences to family, friends, and colleagues. We're going to miss Mr. Davis tremendously. At this time, I'd like for everyone to please join us in a brief moment of silence in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Announcements of action taken in closed session. On expulsions, unanimous vote approved by the Board, EH2526-08 and EH25-26-11. On suspended expulsions, a unanimous vote approval, EH2526-07. And unanimous vote to approve of suspended expulsion contracts include EH2526-06, EH2526-09, EH2526-10, EH2526-15, and EH2526-13. Also approved, a unanimous decision brought by the Board to approve was a revocation of suspended expulsion contract, EH242574. Additionally, in closed session, there's one action to report out, and the report out is in closed session by a vote of 6 to 0, the Board approved a separation agreement for a certificated employee number 9947. Comments from Board members? Chong Yang, Mr. Oliver Taylor, Mr. Seth Steeman, Mr. Gary Crittle, Mr. Frank Crawford. We have recognitions. Mr. Bob Eckhart.
Good evening, Board, Cabinet, members of the audience. This is one of the fun parts of a Board meeting. This is where we get to recognize and do the shout-out for some really good things that have been happening here at the district and within the classrooms. With me, I have Lori Guy, Director of Student Achievement and Data, and we are really happy to announce what has been going on. So, in the world of FFA, there was a Catta Roadshow, I believe it was last week, and Catta, California Agriculture Teachers Association, sorry, it's hard to say fast, especially when you're a little nervous. So Lynn Hurst High School, if we can get the Lynn Hurst High School crew to come up, please. And Board, actually, Board, if you guys can come down, we'll do the whole shake the gauntlet thing. So our Lynn Hurst High School crew, we have Taylor Bisby, we have Chase Bisby, and we have Jacob Unger. They did a phenomenal job, and they were recognized specifically, I want to call out, I want to call out Chase Bisby, he was named Sierra Buttes Section Outstanding Plant Science Pathway Educator of the Year and Superior Region Outstanding Plant Science Pathway Educator. So let's give them a round of applause. And gentlemen, Chase. No longer COVID season, go ahead. Yeah, what? Yeah, shake them all. We're here, shake them if you got them.
They were part of the event.
Of course they were, yeah. Support the team. Everybody supports the team, 100%. Okay. Oh, yeah, picture. You got a picture? Okay.
FFA, right?
Congratulations, thank you. And we had another one of our FFA programs represent up there, and that would be the Marysville FFA. So Marysville, Kayla Coughlin couldn't be here, but Matt Kiono, Jake Wheeler, Kylie Stout, Alexandra Smith, excuse me, if you guys want to come up, perfect. So for Marysville FFA, very productive event as well. We have Kayla Coughlin, and I believe, is she out today?
They're at National Convention.
She's at National, okay, well, she was identified as or achieved Senior, or excuse me, Superior Region Sutter Buttes Teacher of Excellence, Superior Region and Sierra Buttes Animal Science Teacher of the Year. So big hand for Kayla. And I hope, is it Kaylee? Okay, so Kaylee Stout achieved Sierra Buttes Ornamental Horticulture Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. Alexandra Smith, Superior and Sierra Buttes Ag Science Teacher of the Year, congratulations. And now for the big one, Sierra Buttes Section winner and Superior Region winner and overall program winner, Marysville High School FFA, the entire team, good job, guys. Run the gauntlet.
Say hi to Kayla, because she's watching.
Yes. Congratulations again. But wait, we're not done. Okay, UC Davis, we are part, we have partnered in with our STEM Center Program, and we had a couple of significant recognitions. Constance Franklin from Johnson Park Elementary was nominated and achieved Teacher of the Year. Constance, come on up. And then Joshua Fertardo from Lynn Hurst High School, also Teacher of the Year, CSTEM. And in addition to that, we had Constance, Crystal Richards, Joshua Fertardo, Nikki Gremminger, they were all presenters at this conference. So not only did we have winners, we also had folks that were presenting at this conference. So great job, one and all, you guys are killing it. Picture. Thank you, and congratulations again.
Association, Ms. Angela Stiegel.
Good evening. Angela Stiegel, President for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association, and just a few quick things for this evening, nothing too earth-shattering, but some really important things. First off, a congratulations and a thank you to both of our FFA programs and all of our ag teachers, phenomenal, phenomenal group of people, and there's a lot of extra hours and extra jobs that go into being an ag teacher and being part of FFA, but also leading our FFA. So amazing students, but also amazing educators that lead the charge, so thank you to all of them. And also, a big thank you and a congratulations to our CSTEM Teachers of the Year. That is an amazing program, but also the fact that they were presenters as well, so that is definitely a big pride mark for all of us here, so thank you as well for doing all of that. Also, I've been hearing from people about their fall festivals, and some of those have happened and some of those are about to happen, and so I just want to make sure that as a high school teacher who does not have to do that, I sometimes get the joy of attending, but I don't have to help plan them, that's one of the things of being a high school teacher, but it's a lot of work, and sometimes it's work that goes kind of unsaid and unrecognized that happens kind of behind the scenes. So a thank you to all of the teachers, the PTOs, the parents, the school staffs, that are all either have made or are making those fall festivals possible, that's a huge thing for our students and our communities. Also, something for the Board to put on your calendar right now, so you can plan ahead and be there. A little shout-out to our little but growing MHS Drama Department. Our MHS Drama students are going to be putting on a play, and so their play is going to be November 19th through the 21st. So mark your calendars, the 19th is going to be their early, like their matinee performance, they're going to be performing at 1:00, and on the 20th and the 21st, they're going to be performing in the evening, I can get you those exact times, but Shawnee Bushnell and her 6th period class, along with the Drama Club, are just doing an absolute bang-up job in rebuilding a program that was once a really popular, robust program at Marysville High, and then went by the wayside and now has been coming back, and they are fighting and scraping their way up, so if you could make it out for that, I know they would really appreciate it and would love to see you there. Also, I want to mention an event that just started at Marysville High that I'm sure you're going to hear about the next time we have our student speakers as well, but I just want to make sure everybody hears about this and hears about it in relative close proximity to when the events happen, but our Marysville High School football team, our senior football players, put together an event and a recognition that was called "Made an Impact." And so each of the seniors on our football team picked a staff member that had made an impact, and they actually came in and presented in the middle of a class, or in the middle of somebody's workday, came in and recognized them. I actually got the honor of being chosen by Brody Moore, who's one of our seniors, I had him in class last year, but every single one of our seniors picked somebody, they came in, our admin team came with them, our campus security team, and we had parents who came in as well, they took pictures, they then had us out to team dinner last week and served us all dinner. So I want to make sure that I thank Lois Sakoropoulos, who was the parent that kind of led the charge, but all of the parents, the meal was phenomenal, but also all of the senior football players who participated in that, and you could tell really took the time to think through who they picked, and then they actually explained to us why they picked us. And so it was, it's a really pivotal moment in an educator's career or a staff member's career, when you actually get to hear from a student face-to-face that you made a difference and you made an impact, and I appreciate it, because that's what we all work for every single day, and whether you are a teacher in the classroom, a custodian, school secretary, working in the activities office, whatever it is, to have a student tell you that face-to-face and know that then with certainty, that's huge. But also, they had the support of our current admin team, and my understanding is, somebody just may have ratted her out a little bit, but my understanding is that our new Assistant Principal, Michelle Walker, was one of the people who kind of really helped out a whole lot, so I want to thank her and tell her that that is greatly appreciated, I know it's yet one more thing to add to somebody's plate, but also our current coaches and players, like I said, in particular the seniors. But I also really want to make sure that I acknowledge and thank Will Claggett. Will Claggett, apparently this was his brainchild and something he came up with, and an idea that he brought forward and shared, and then has since let people take that idea and run with it, and he is an absolutely phenomenal, talented, dedicated teacher and educator, and also as well a coach, but I just want to make sure that Will understands that people really truly felt that and that it made a difference in people's lives as well, and that's huge coming from, you know, one teacher to another. But the last thing that I had for this evening is that we all know that Halloween is coming up on Friday, and it is a student non-attendance day, they're the lucky ones, they have the three-day weekend, but a couple of things with that. One, I'm not sure exactly how we ended up with the largest number of pumpkins I've ever seen in my life, but my understanding is there are some thanks to be put out there for that, so whoever made that happen, please understand that you made some people very, very happy, especially some children in our community, very, very happy, and so I want to thank whoever that is, but also just to make sure that everybody does enjoy the holiday, and please do so safely, like everybody out there, you know, slow down a little bit when you're on the roads, we know we're going to have kids out on the streets and stuff, but everybody just be careful, be safe, and have a good one, thank you so much.
Hey, thank you, Angela. Operating Engineers Level Unit Number Three, California School Employees Association 326 and 648, Association Management and Confidential Employees Supervisory Unit. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comment cards tonight? We do not. With that, I move it over to Mr. Jordan Reed's Superintendent Updates.
All right, thank you. Angela, I will answer your question. We want to thank Mr. Mike Wallace of Wallace Farms of Colusa, who essentially reached out to our Ed Services Department, had a conversation with Melanie Stanland, and Melanie and Bob basically got the wheels moving. There were a donation of 60 pallets on a semi-truck, they were carving pumpkins. Cabinet made the decision to put it in the hands of our ag teachers, and essentially use as kind of the drop-off point, if you will, one at Marysville High School, one at Lynn Hurst High School. I was out there at Lynn Hurst when our facilities guys, which were amazing, were taking forklifts and pallet lifts and everything else to get them off, we had trucks lined up with trailers, we had various community members that had trailers and vehicles and were taking to the various school sites, all told, I don't think 2,500 and 3,000 pumpkins were essentially donated, made their way all the way up to Yuba Feather throughout the hills, throughout, I think just about every school in our district, at least at the elementary level, that wanted it. I know the value was probably about $10,000 worth of carving pumpkins, which is essentially amazing, I think we made a connection, certainly on the ag side, for teachers and for students. Apparently watermelons are coming next in the springtime, asked if we'd be interested in that, we immediately said yes, asked if we wanted to be on the list for next year for pumpkins, we immediately said yes, so fingers crossed we have the business card and we'll continue that amazing relationship with Mr. Wallace, who is just a really a great man, it sounds like it's a big family, I want to say they farm in Yolo, Meridian, Basin Center, Colusa, I want to say one other place, very diversified, a number of things that they do. So I had my own pumpkin patch, I was excited, I had 25 pumpkins, and I realized that I planted them too soon, so it was nice to have a conversation with Mr. Wallace, so hopefully next year my pumpkins essentially are better, I was proud that I had about seven or eight, there were 20 pounds or more, but I can do better and I can grow more, so all in all, it was a great event. So again, thank you to Mr. Wallace, but more importantly, the staff throughout the district, who essentially made that happen. Couple other things, a reminder, Marysville High School is going to have the track ribbon-cutting ceremony this Thursday at 4:30. I understand the football game has been moved from Friday to Thursday, is correct, so I think that will happen as soon as the ceremony is over, invite everybody to come out and be a part of that as well. I want to thank Marysville High School for giving the opportunity to judge in opening and closing ceremonies, there's some really good kids, some really amazing kids, I appreciate the fact, I think there's 13 teams that I was able to be a part of judging, I don't know, 65 to 70 students, so again, ranged all over the place, but there certainly was some amazing kids, and any kid who stood up, and they all did, to stand in front of five complete strangers and to essentially recite what they did, was an amazing thing to see, and with the novice, it probably exceeded, I would imagine, over 100 kids that participated in that particular event, so shout-out to that. Also to Lynn Hurst Ag Advisory this past week, a very good meeting as well, so certainly echoing what Ms. Stiegel said, our ag teachers and departments are doing some amazing things in growing, and we certainly appreciate and value you all, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much Superintendent Reeves. Moving forward to 11.1 approval, the October 14, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Minutes, Board Members, are there any noted corrections? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Motion from Seth Steeman, do I have a second? Second from Oliver Taylor, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 11.2 approval of consent agenda items. We'll now approve the consent agenda items 13.1 through 15.8. Is there any Board member, or is there any item that the Board would like to pull for further clarification?
We do need to pull item 13.2.
13.2 will be.
Ratify an MOU between Centeslaw County Office of Education and our district, and also ask that the Board President pull item 13.2.
Item 13.2 is pulled for discussion, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 13.1 through 15.8 with the exception of item 13.2. Motion by Mr. Frank Crawford, do I have a second? Second from Seth Steeman, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 6:00. Moving forward with New Business Educational Services, 17.1, Public Hearing, the Governing Board of Marysville Joint Unified School District, MJUSD, will hold a public hearing on Compliance of Pupil Textbooks and Instructional Materials Incentive Programs Act. Mr. Bob Eckhart, Assistant Principal, will present.
Good evening again, Board. I don't know if that comes up. Okay, so tonight, we're bringing forward the annual resolution certifying that the district has sufficient instructional materials for students in accordance with California Education Code. To ensure that accuracy, Educational Services, we took several steps in preparation for the certification. I reached out to all the principals as one of the steps, say, you know, hey, do you have everything that you need? There was some areas that needed to be shored up, also working with MUDA, we had a couple of conversations, a couple of teachers mentioned we needed some pieces here, we needed some pieces there, we were able to rectify that situation, get everything ordered that we needed to get ordered, and based on that, that we have filled up any identified gaps, we're looking to, for the certification to confirm that every student in the district has access to standards-aligned textbooks and instructional materials in all core subject areas consistent with the requirements of the Williams Act based on this review, staff recommends that you approve of the resolution.
Great, thank you. I now need to open up this, open up the meeting for a public hearing, can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Mr. Yang, okay, and do I have a second? Second, Mr. Frank Crawford, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now opened, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak? Not at this time? Okay. With that, can I have a motion to close the public hearing and improve resolution of 2025-26/11? For Gary Crittle? And a second was Oliver Taylor, thank you, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Moving on to New Business Personnel Services, Gabe Simon.
So you have 18.1, which is the Board, first read of your Board policies, the 4,000 series, right? Those have, we've looked through those personnel policies, I know really well, we use them quite often, and made sure they were.
There was some areas that needed to be shored up, also working with MutA, we had a couple of conversations, a couple of teachers mentioned we needed some pieces here, we needed some pieces there, we were able to rectify that situation, get everything ordered that we needed to get ordered. And based on that, that we have filled up any identified gaps, we're looking to, for the certification, to confirm that every student in the district has access to standards-aligned textbooks and instructional materials in all core subject areas consistent with the requirements of the Williams Act based on this review, staff recommends that you approve of the resolution.
Great, thank you. I now need to open up this, open up the meeting for a public hearing, can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Mr. Yang, okay. And do I have a second? Second, Mr. Frank Crawford, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, public hearing is now opened, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak? Not at this time? Okay. With that, can I have a motion to close the public hearing and approve resolution of For Gary Krittl. And a second was Oliver Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, Personnel Services, Gabe Simon.
So you have 18.1, which is the Board first read of your Board policies, the 4,000 series, right? Those have, we've looked through those personnel policies, I know really well, we use them quite often, and made sure they were updated with the current ed code and laws, and so we've made all the updates to align ourselves with the laws and the legislation. And then they'll come back to you for a second read and hopefully approval at the next meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Simon? No? Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, our next regular scheduled board meeting is on November 18th, 2025, this meeting is now adjourned.
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
Each week, local governments and schools make important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts on our community and quite possibly on you. YubaSutter.live makes it easier for you to know what's going on. We livestream up to four local government meetings every Tuesday, important special meetings, Oliver's Public Utility District's Mondays and Thursday meetings, and town halls. To make it easier for you, we pull out informative sections and present them individually. For your information, our new series that posts Wednesdays right here on YubaSutter.live, subscribe to our YouTube channel, like and follow our Facebook page so you know when we're live and when we've posted something new. For your information, local government meetings made shorter, posting Wednesdays here on